Take this meeting.
Susan Skerries, Joseph Jones, Michael Libby, Lauren Campbell. I do not see Miss harms.
Uh, she will be. Um. Please join me in the public.
The United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, people of the agenda.
So.
Roll call.
Susan Skerries, Joseph Jones, Michael Libby, Lauren Campbell, and Teresa harms.
Yes.
And three, presentation of life-saving awards Brett Mercial and Brian Jones.
All right, so on December twenty-sixth, West Com dispatched Windsor Heights Fire Department for difficulty breathing call. Caller advised her boyfriend can't breathe. Paramedics Brian Jones and Brett Mercial responded when they arrived, based girlfriend and advised that the patient had been outside shoveling stone when he came back inside, he's having difficulty breathing. Paramedics assess the patient, put him on oxygen, then CPAP and quickly move into the ambulance and request additional manpower from fire. Once the in the ambulance, the patient's oxygen saturation continued to deteriorate and paramedic society was going to be necessary to inhibit the patient as he was in danger of respiratory failure. Medications were administered to facilitate innovation and crew began breathing for the patient. During this process, the patient's heart rate slowed and then stopped. CPR was immediately administered to the patient. After approximately seven minutes of CPR, including chest compressions, breathing for the patient, medication being administered, the patient regained pulse. Patient was transported to the hospital where he faced several challenges, including suffering a stroke during his stay there. He underwent several procedures and physical therapy and was eventually able to return home. Thankfully, he has made an almost complete recovery and will be able to return to his normal life. We are very happy to have Paul and his girlfriend again here with us tonight. You guys want to come up here? So for their efforts on December twenty-sixth firefighter paramedic Brian Jones and firefighter paramedic Brett Mercial are hereby being awarded the Windsor Heights Fire Department life-saving award for outstanding performance and commitment to saving another person. Uh, we'd just also like to thank the member of the fire department that responded, uh, they couldn't be here tonight, but they were firefighter paramedic Ryan Osborne, firefighter paramedic Lou Clement, and firefighter Angie Erin Gardwell. So Brian and Brett, please come on.
Very nice. Public hearing, uh, for A, public hearing on the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. Motion. Roll call.
Susan Skerries, Joseph Jones, Michael Libby, Lauren Campbell, and Teresa harms.
Yeah.
Uh, Michelle, anything to discuss or add since, uh, the last time you had it?
No, just that we are going to leave the, um, levy total property tax levy rate the same as last year thirteen point seven six five four one.
Well, uh, thank you. And staff for your work on this. Obviously, there's no change in the levy, but that's sort of a, um, you know, a very small thing about what this budget represents, which I think most importantly, I turned to the pretty staggering number of sixteen million dollars, uh, for capital projects, uh, including, uh, almost thirteen million dollars on Saturday. Very true. People will rejoice upon hearing that. Buddy from the public here to comment about the budget? Mark? No, I'm kidding. We're not going to talk about the budget. Uh, is there anybody online in the public comment, uh, that was submitted? Okay, um, motion to close the public here, so move. Roll call.
Susan's theories, Joseph Jones, Michael Libby, Lauren Campbell, and Teresa harms.
Yeah.
Three B, consideration of resolution number twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-one, a resolution adopted this for year twenty-three. Oh, please. Second. Any further discussion on the budget, council?
I would just say that I think that this is a, um, thank you to the staff and Michelle for all their hard work on on this and the changes that, um, came forward and the extension of this political legislative process, um, and a little wish that that were thrown in into that, but I think more so, I think it's a good representation of the goals and priorities that we set out, um, and it provides for a wide swath of, um, things that need to be funded, everything from infrastructure, which is a huge priority, and we have continued to make that commitment year over year for the last several years. Um, but in addition, we're making sure that communication stays the priority, that we're doing, you know, other types of upgrades, you know, the amendment to our ERP, all of the things that, um, for so long have been left aside, um, or were not, uh, remain a priority, so continuing to do those things while, um, reducing the levy like we did for the two previous years, I think that's really important for not only, um, us to recognize when other communities are either raising that or, um, or cutting services or whatever the case may be, so I just, you know, they have conversations with folks from, you know, even around the state, um, some of the budget challenges that they're facing, and I, I think we should be very, very proud of this budget that we're putting forward, um, in a very balanced way and still be able to do things like quality of life services through our special events, um, but also maybe, you know, keep our community infrastructure. So kudos to everybody for giving, not only giving feedback, but to the staff for, um, identifying all of those places, um, um, to make the the goals and priorities that we set forward, you know, to be able to make them happen.
And you miss arms, any other comment or discussion? Hearing non-roll call.
Susan's Gary's, Joseph Jones, Michael Libby, Lauren Campbell, and Teresa harms.
Yeah.
Six, or I'm sorry, item five, public forum, this is a time set aside from the public on topics of city business, other than those listed on the agenda, no action may be taken. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and keep your comments to no longer form. Is there anybody online?
There is not.
All right. Item six, consent agenda. Second. Roll call.
Uh, Susan's curious, Joseph Jones, Michael Libby, Lauren Campbell, and Teresa harms.
Yes.
Um, seven, A, new business, A, consideration of fireworks for this for the winter high ball festival. Um, I included the memo, I don't know if it's Jerry's or Andrew's would like to speak, or I'm happy to speak on it every.
It doesn't matter.
Okay. Um, well, there are, uh, three, I'm sorry, there are two proposals included in the council packet, um, from J and M fireworks, the proposal being for thirteen thousand or fifteen thousand. We already received, my understanding, the bonuses or the benefits for purchasing early. First, you get an eight percent bonus by hand early, and then we also already get a bonus for being essentially loyal or a customer. Um, the ask for council to consider is either a buy at fifteen thousand or a buy at thirteen thousand, uh, my understanding from Miss Gary's and her ask for feedback from the special events committee is that the super majority or four out of the five responses recommended fifteen thousand dollar level purchase, and my understanding that that was, uh, purchased last year, and as there was positive feedback received after last year. Uh, so that's council to consider, uh, discuss, uh, and make the recommendation as to what level of, uh, what amount of power should be included.
So I do have a question, so, um, the foundation is responsible for the Fourth of July fireworks moving forward, correct? So is there, has there been any conversation about opportunity for bulk purchasing for those two events in a partnership?
So I did talk to him about that, and there's really nothing, we're getting all of the, all of the percentages off that we possibly can. Um, so I, I mean, I did try to work that, I said, you know, if the foundation purchases, could be both, you know, get some type of extra deal, you know, versus just the, like, twenty-three percent, could we go up to maybe thirty percent, you know, because we're great? And, no.
So do you have the foundation, then go qualify for those things now? Okay, all right, super. Fantastic. Chad set us up for success, and Susan's done a job of doing this work, so that relationship and, and the foundation engaged and, um, the, um, salesperson.
So basically, the, the big difference is the amount of time, you know, it's like twenty-five minutes for the fifteen thousand, which last year, I think it was about twenty-eight minutes, um, and then the thirteen thousand is about twenty minutes, and, um, that's kind of the difference between the two. That's a little easier for me to understand than all of this stuff, because I looked at it, I'm like, well, this means absolutely nothing to me, so let's put this into smaller terms for people like me to understand. So.
Do we have any idea when payment is due? If I just, I can't, I don't see it on here.
So it's supposed to be ninety days before, like, to get that early, he said ninety days, I believe, and is what I've written, but I said, you know, maybe we can look at, he said, so I kind of threw that in, if we paid for it, like, in July, could we get extra discount for paying early, like, a double bonus? He didn't go for that. I mean, I was really trying.
So as long as it is halfway.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's all. Thanks.
Susan, I'm gonna go shave my next card.
I'll go along with you.
Well, um, council willing. Looking for a motion as to one of the numbers.
I'll, I'll make you that we do fifteen, fifteen thousand dollars.
Second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Susan's curious, Joseph Jones, Michael Libby, Lauren Campbell, and Teresa harms.
Seven B, consideration of resolution number twenty twenty-three, twenty-three, a resolution of spending a five thousand dollars, the Windsor Heights Foundation for sponsorship of summer activities.
Second.
Uh, Rochelle or Art?
You must be one.
Mark, Windsor Heights Foundation, address six four zero one. Uh, for the most part, I had, we are going along with the same, uh, who's kind of work, I worked with, uh, Mark Johnson, who's working, and, uh, I tried to do the same thing, get Susan to get on that, see if we couldn't, because the city, uh, we knew the city was also doing that for Ball Fest, so, um, with, uh, we, uh, did, uh, look at, uh, proposals for fifteen, uh, thousand, seven, seventeen-five and, and twenty thousand. Um, we had not totally voted on it, but just from reactions of folks that I talked to, ones that were going to go with the fifteen thousand also on that, so there is some consistency, uh, with the cities and ours on that, so that, um, we didn't want, sure, you know, be a higher amount than in them, uh, happens, even though the Fourth of July, you know, is very strong. Last year on that, we had a, a very strong, uh, response, um, we have a lot of folks that, um, stated that they weren't glad that, uh, we did that Fourth of July. So the five thousand that we're using is not only for the fireworks or Fourth of July timeframe on that, but also on this, uh, use for, um, within, uh, Knights and Heights concert series and things. We, uh, for the Fourth of July, um, our total expenses as foundation on that will probably run close to twenty thousand, uh, with the, uh, security, um, maintenance, uh, folks that we need, the fire department, and, um, for bodies and, uh, the city, plus the band plays a little bit longer. So, um, your five thousand on that will go as a, we sit down as a sponsor, um, it'll go on all, um, of our primary, um, mailings that we can put, uh, as much as we can into some of those, but also, um, definitely on our social media, um, outlets, and then we have, um, free, um, tribal, uh, triangle signage that we put up, uh, the Knights and Heights, and so you would be listed as a primary sponsor. Same questions for me on that, uh, um, I guess I'm really very grateful for last year's, uh, position, we went up a little bit on our price from forty-five hundred to five thousand, um, just because we've had some increases in our brand prices. And it was our, um, expectation that we will also be sponsorship of various activities for the special, uh, events committee, uh, inclusive of the, uh, the brand for the fall.
Can I ask that? Oh, I'm sorry. So Catch Des Moines, I put out to them on our special events calendar, I included Knights and the Heights so that it was, you know, there, kind of all in one area for her, but she did question what time fireworks were going to go off, and I thought, well, I don't really know, but like, when it's dark, but is there a, a timeframe, because then she said that, she asked if the band would be playing, and I said, well, historically, the band plays up until the fireworks go off, but this is, I'm not in charge of this event, so I'm going to ask.
I think last year on that, we were right, close to ten, uh, between ten and ten, and itself on that, it's when the fireworks started. Uh, little different than Ball Fest because it is much lighter, hold it longer during the summertime, uh, Ball Fest on that is better, um, with that, unanticipated, probably in the, we have the band itself on that, um, we try to have them play at least up to nine forty-five. Um, they, because of their teardown on that week, we had a little bit of timeframe in between, uh, what?
I'll send an email and just clarify that.
Other question?
It looks like the first, uh, Knights and Heights date is June twenty-seventh, so we're going for it, right?
Yes.
Do you happen to have any signs or anything that we can put up, because we have, we'll have at least one, we'll have birthday event, and then we'll have the movies in the park event, so we could put up something to, you know, remind people to look at your calendar or something along those lines.
We're hoping to have, uh, not hoping, we will have some literature, um, we, last year went over very well with the guys from Social, we're doing that two days prior, so it'd be that Sunday evening, uh, prior to the first Knights and Heights, um, and we'll have the literature that we'll be handing out, and, um, even from the, as you know, on that, um, we do the neighborhood portions on that, but we had very good success, just, I think, um, I tested that, uh, down in Copen Park, we were going to give that again, um, with distribution, uh, though we're not very near neighborhoods south of the university, um, that were involved, and so because of that, uh, it did give the opportunity for those folks to come down, plus there's a lot more apartment.
I think it's just tremendous that Windsor Heights can do all of stuff, not only our residents, but also our guests, and that's just, it's, it's good to be part of, of a good time all the way around, Mark. Congratulations.
Yeah, appreciate it. Um, and I know with Susan and Lauren, with the special events committee, so we try to injure, uh, act, I guess that we will, um, with some of those, the activities on that, we feel that it's all part of, um, the mission of the foundation, but also good, uh, rapport with the city itself on that. Um, I mean, going forward, there are a couple of things that we would like as a foundation, you know, that phase one of planning in Copen Park portion on that is people plant, um, we still would like to be involved as some of the bigger projects down the road will be involved, so if we have extra time, knowing kind of where, um, the city would like us to possibly be involved with, um, we will leave that, you know, we have, um, David Schwartz and myself spoke with, um, the Wapbee Foundation, and they usually have like almost a, a three year lead, uh, with some of the things that we are doing.
Other question or comment? Hearing non-roll call.
Susan's curious, Joseph Jones, Michael Libby, Lauren Campbell, and Teresa harms.
Thank you, Mark. Let's see, consideration of two of the, uh, search firms.
Does anyone need a copy? Cause we have.
I would hope you have copies.
If you need. The two that are left, or I guess there's three, PM Management Consulting, Gov HR, and, um, Esperne Narlock and Associates, those are the three that we have left.
Oh, we, um, probably. So you, I felt, want all that, um, all of the, these, um, arts, her plan, or, um, consulting guys, and she would like to, uh, propose, unless we go with somebody else right now, she would like to, um, meet with council as whole. You know, discuss what, what sort of things we're looking for, not a consultant, and also as, not without hiring, um, so, I would state that, and she, she was interested in opening
We know that these are still, all of these pricings is still current.
We do.
On the, that we start, you know, we really wouldn't want to think of the thing we did last time.
Um, they, the way Gov HR works is, quote is available, um, that's who you want, period.
Was it Gov HR that, so I have expressed concern with the, you know?
We did.
You know, I knew, well, because I, I mean, I didn't have, I, I, but I didn't get the day-to-day interaction, but.
A lot of. From what I recall, um, it, it had to do with, um, I can't think of her name, the facilitator, Charlene, Charlene, um, and she, she was very, kind of, um, if staff would say, hey, what about global, she'd be like, no, 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 you can't do that, or no, we're not going to do that, or she didn't want to hear what we had to say, that was kind of, and Chad actually had the biggest problem, which is interesting, but, um.
I can't remember what his problem was.
I, I think a lot of it was because she wasn't listening, she, um, she, she just wasn't listening, but.
Wasn't open to staff feedback.
She was not open to staff feedback.
So we just asked that, and she's not, or if we, if we went with them, we could ask for.
Somebody else.
Someone there.
Yes.
I guess I was pleased with her, and I don't, I don't even decide, but, um, I'm just thinking that, um, you know, professional, all, you know, all of the things you would expect, this is what they do, this is their wheelhouse, do it every day.
Felt like they stayed on schedule too.
They're special. They filled some of the jobs that are most recent positions in our, in our state.
Did I, I, did I miss that the Esperne Narlock and Associates, did I miss, I, I looked through very briefly, but I didn't really see anybody in Iowa that used her.
Look, listen.
Thank you all that, that, that.
I think it'd be really interesting to, um, also with the current climate, it is book for administration, searches, um, is the applicant pool that we've been shown is that, um, typical with like other cities are seeing right now, or is that, um, official of course, any of the measures, very good things for friends and people. Mentioned, um, I got a, too interested in speaking.
I think one of the things that we've been through has, um, lots of indecision and issues where somebody really doesn't know us very well. Issues where somebody really doesn't know us very well. I think one of the positive things about Oliver is that she had a successful run in four years. And apparently is having a successful run in Bonderan. One of the things that we came across in our most recent search was that. You know, when we Google somebody, we find out some negative things about them. And I'm sure that people Google Windsor Heights, they're gonna find some. Problems. And I think that what Oliver brings is a better understanding of our needs. As well as can be a positive voice for our community. And she's well known and trusted down in the Midwest, but also here in St. Louis. So I I know she's a little less expensive and there isn't a real fancy. Outlay of information here. But I think. Trust is a big part of whatever we do. And having known Ms. Oliver for years. And her reputation, I think that she rode well in the search for this city.
Other thoughts?
So again, I don't necessarily have a um. Here representing any of these. Um I guess my concern would be she has a daytime job. And then how do we fit, how does the recruitment fit into that? Where this is a professional firm is what they do. And, you know, I. I don't want to be an afterthought, and we've worked with WHR before, and. They hopefully have an idea of who we are more of recent than. Years past um. As well and understand what we're trying to. Job we're trying to fulfill. Um I I I do have some concerns about being. Having a full-time position and also trying to fill our. Sure she, she couldn't do it. She couldn't put her. Hat in the rain, but. With that, I'm gonna make recommendations.
Is there a second for the motion? Further discussion on the. Um let's say. I don't know. Motion has been made. I don't know if it's um. Worthy to consider hearing what she has to say first, considering that won't cost us anything. But again, motion has been made. So further discussion. Speak now. Do you want her to come to a future meeting? That we're gonna have a special meeting.
So when are we looking at this? Would be, I mean.
I'd ask her to be present.
And then would we have to, like, we couldn't approve this now and then deal with her? I like. I just don't want to get us too far behind, because I think we're kind of already behind.
I think there would be, it would behoove us to at least listen. Um and as far as being behind the eight ball, we're so far behind the eight ball right now that another two weeks may not make. A whole heck of a lot of difference.
Yeah, I'll be there.
Yeah. It sound like.
So I'd like to hear a little sound. And allow us to have. Well, the motion is made, unless there's going to be a draw, brawl of the of the second. Um then gonna hold on consideration of HR's. Further discussion. Does anyone else have a thought on hearing from Ms. Oliver or not? And I agree with you for two weeks, it's gonna make a difference. So it'd be okay if I said. The conversation. Yeah, I don't, I don't see how it can hurt.
Well, if we're gonna have a conversation of hurt, I mean, you have a conversation. I mean, essentially, I mean, interview, well.
So we can do that? Sure.
Then I would want to also put a text or an email, because I don't want it to delay. Because I know what's happened, because I've seen it before. It gets you, it we're now more than a month out, and we're still, and now we're gonna restart a process, and it just delayed the line, the rag.
I would suggest that doing it right would be better than speeding.
I don't think that we're doing well. Then 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 what? We should have gone with first person.
Well, I think we've learned a lot. You know, um so as far as our timing goes, that's.
So can we make this decision after you call the special meeting? To talk to both people and then at the end of that meeting, we can make the decision so that in the next week. Whatever, week and a half, whatever your thoughts are, because I don't even know when the next council meeting is. Barely even know the date today. So two weeks from today.
It's the seventeenth, but Bonderan has the same schedules we do.
So that would be the, that, I mean, we'd always be doing special meetings if we met with Marquita, which adds more our plate as well. That's what I was concerned about the first time that we we went through, not with Marquita herself in any shape or form. I was worried about how many special meetings we would have and trying to work with all of our. Schedules, mostly. Mothers. Seems to be Mr. Popular, but you know, it's, that was my concern.
All right, well, before we start this part of the conversation, let's just move on with the book.
Sorry. No, I mean.
I mean, I don't want more meetings.
All right.
Sorry.
For my motion that has not been.
Teresa Harns.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
No.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
And Susan Scaries.
Yes.
Eight A reports. I will have my written report uh next.
Um, yeah. So next week, whenever the decisions meeting hopefully next week. And maybe um if it's equal for the grants and then um. Making all the fresh, I think, extra, and for doing initial answer for the special events for summer, um spring and summer. So. Um I think it looks great and and could work on that. And committee um. And um we're gonna be working on a business.
No, we're not. Yeah, they're not. It's on the very bottom of the list. So if we have time, we will try to get to it. But for right now, it's at the very, very bottom.
Okay.
Because we have so much going on.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm so sorry. I I should have communicated. I was gonna communicate that in the communication meeting. Next week. But yes, it's at the, it's on the list. It's just at the bottom of the list.
Okay. We won't talk about it then.
Yeah, perfect.
And happy to do it myself, too, and that's what we need to do, but we can.
Okay.
We had identified things to do, so maybe you can just send me that list and start working on it.
Okay.
Okay.
Never. I can do.
Thanks. Um, no, just because I'm in shock right now, but.
We'll. We'll talk about it.
Yeah, okay.
That's good.
Um, the part of the chief interviews last Friday, followed by the Senate meeting greetings, and then just reminded that next Saturday is the fire department's district month. That's right at nine in the morning. It's a little retarded to things like you, running founder free thirty, because if you show up at nine oh five, you are not allowed.
Um, again, we had the, this chief gathering the other day. Really well, and thanks to staff setting that up. Yeah, I'm still not. April fifteenth, Saturday, I'll be doing another coffee with council. We uh between nine thirty and eleven thirty, Browners. We had a good economic development committee meeting recently. And uh most of the people that are on the committee were there. We had to adjust our committee to the final Wednesday each month and the final Tuesday. Um one of our members just is unable to attend on Tuesdays or Thursdays. The group decided to move to the final Wednesday. Lots of information, lots of, lots of discussion, and it was productive.
Yeah, we have dark tomorrow, our monthly meeting. We're still limits of doing our CEO search, so that maybe we meet again mid-April. Um seems to be going well on on schedule. Um our new shelter, our replacement shelter will occur. At some point in the future. Um so it was irreplaceably damaged in December by a storm, and it takes sixteen weeks to replace or to get a new one in. But they're behind because of supply chain issues, and so they said they'd let us know when they get it in, and then they can schedule a time for us to. Put it in, so otherwise we'll, we'll be missing that west side shelter. Or somebody might. Oh, they made it so. So that's happening. I asked the mayor to, for one of our upcoming council meetings, add the conversation about grow solar to our agenda again. Um they're gonna do another round of that this year, and so I give the opportunity for citizens and our businesses to participate in that program. It is fifty-two last year for those ones that rights and somewhere around seventy-five or seventy-six thousand dollars worth. Work there, so. Um so more people might be interested this time around, and so I think we should give them an opportunity to jump in on. Hopefully look at that. Discuss. And that is it.
Joseph, can I ask a question? Are you involved at all with the guaranteed basic income group? Is that moving on? I just hadn't heard anything.
Yeah, they're they're in the process of finishing some work.
Well, that's a good approach to learn this one. Have them, have you got a question for them? And so maybe before we can schedule them like a month advance on the calendar, so we can get that. They're gonna be here in our newsletter. Um so that way people can know us if they can be here. I think that would be.
For when they do like the.
They make the.
Conversation.
Yeah, yeah. We'll be here folks that much advanced, because I know there has been very much conversation in my neighborhood.
They also. No, it's.
Um Liz and I are working on securing some more sponsors for Earth Day. We're hoping to have some more signups for the birdhouse painting and for the flower pot paintings, so flower pot painting. So go ahead and sign everybody else up and uh. Have some fun there. Uh please continue to share these events on social media pages for us so that we can gain some more exposure for these events. Uh thank you to Erin with Des Moines Parrot for including our Earth Day event in her Earth Day post on her Facebook page, which received a lot of um hits from people. Um not one that I usually go to since my daughter's orders, but I mean, it was really interesting to read what what's all going wrong. Uh we are continuing to buy movies in the park. I secured the pizza cookies and drinks for the six movies. I um am waiting to hear back from Flick's Brew House about the popcorn. I see that I have an email from her, so. I'll read that when we get done. We're still looking for sponsors for our special events. Uh Lauren and I and Adam sent out a sponsorship request along with the pamphlet that Lauren made showcasing all of our fun special events. So if you know a business that we should talk with about sponsoring, let Lauren and I know so that we can uh plan a chat. Rochelle is working on helping special events gain access to fill out the Walmart Sam's Club donation request. And also helping to submit an application for the Pope County Supervisor's donation to our special events. Fingers crossed that we. Receive all the funds we request from both those two places. Uh the end of March, I was able to attend a small business conference that's Des Moines Partnership sponsored. It was really informational, and I took what I learned to better myself as a business owner, but also as a council member. Um I met some great small businesses and have been given the opportunity to share all the changes that Windsor Heights has gone through in the last four years. And I've also asked them to be sponsors, you know, kill two birds with one stone. Uh today I was able to attend a Zoom meeting that Des Moines Partnership put on to give updates on the state legislature. On Wednesday, I'm attending a multi-city chamber event titled Women's Mentoring Event twenty twenty-three. Then I'm attending Metro West Board Meeting on April fifteenth. I'll be attending the Iowa Mayor's Association Emergency Management, CM. Um thank you to all city staff who have had to pick up extra duties, work some extra shifts, completed tasks that aren't normally theirs. And everything in between as we are in this time when we don't have all of our open positions filled. It's good to know that the residents will not see any changes in the services we provide because of our great staff who are willing to roll up their sleeves and do what needs to be done. I can't say thank you enough to our staff for completing this. And then finally, I want to thank Captain Meyer for his many years of service to the city and residents of Windsor Heights. Captain Meyer has been one that is a master of, I swear everything. He worked in law enforcement and was also our IT person. It really wouldn't have surprised me to see him working underneath a vehicle after fixing my emails and prior to that spending hours dealing with something law enforcement related. Thank you to Captain Meyer's family for being willing to work around the crazy schedules he had to keep and for being his support system. The city will not be the same without Captain Meyer, and he will be taking with him a vast amount of knowledge that is probably more valuable than even even his years of law enforcement experience. He has known the ins and outs of Windsor Heights for many, many years, and my Captain Meyer has been the constant for the city. Thank you for your years of dedicated service to the Windsor Heights residents, business owners, and also to city staff. Congratulations to Captain Meyer and his retirement, and good luck to him as he starts this new chapter in life. I do hope that the Meyer family is able to hold the biggest Fourth of July party ever to make up for all the years that Captain Meyer has had to work on the fourth.
Ironman party is tomorrow.
Tuesday.
Just tomorrow.
Exactly. Two to four. And then.
And remarks are.
Uh no, it's in the C E C. And then at three o'clock will be the presentation, so. And then three thirty, he'll do his last call.
Okay, Mr. Grab the the Kleenex is what you're saying.
I can't even. I'm not, I can't even. Uh yes, uh University Avenue, we got a update about them. They, the last thing on their list is. Grass, soil, and landscape restoration. They're gonna work on that starting this second week in April. And then there's also fixing some sort of sign, but they should be done um weather dependent. I'm gonna say that again and again after I tell you the rest of the stuff. All weather dependent, uh but hopefully within the month of April, that all that stuff will be taken care of. And then uh the next thing is sixty-eight Street North. Um we had a um. A pre-construction meeting, and that all is going to start at the beginning of May. And they'll be, that'll be complete by September thirty, and that's their completion date, but they're hoping to be completed before September. And the fourth one is a public safety parking lot. We had the pre-construction meeting for that this morning, and the demo will start in the next two weeks. Uh that's all weather dependent, and their actual end date is August thirty-first, but. They um said they should be finished by the end of May. Um but here's gonna be the situation. There will be absolutely no parking down here. And um the front is for this front half, this side is gonna be tore up as well. So the question becomes, do we do um meetings on Zoom versus here in city in. Uh public safety, or do we move meetings somewhere else? Um it's gonna be, parking's gonna be a struggle. Um so that's a question that we'll have to answer. Um plus there's. Uh in two weeks.
And it'll end May? And it'll end May.
In May. They're hoping by the end of May. Yeah.
Maybe possibly.
That's a stupid comment there. So, um, possibly three meetings that we would have to move somewhere or do Zoom.
Well, we've had meetings down at the meeting center before, so.
Like before, came on the council, they have meetings in different places, right? Was it like taking it to the streets or something like?
Oh, yeah. No, no, you're right. Yeah, we used to. Yeah.
That was long. That was before I.
Jerry Sullivan's.
The only issue we would have is we would not be available via Zoom. Um, if we had it somewhere else. Um, like.
These are unique circumstances.
A hundred percent. So just want you to be aware, but we'll work through that and figure out where the next meeting is.
Could we video it and put it up on YouTube like we did old school?
Had in the past. Yeah, figure something out.
Um, what have been our, um. Participation via Zoom.
It's usually, I think the most participants was the chickens. And then. Yeah. Yeah, um, I think we could probably, but off the top of my head, I can say since I've been here, it's. Lucky if there's one person that chimes in, and it's usually someone like coming in remotely like Derek or Chad, or if some someone needed to attend virtually. It's not really a public's logging into it.
For the long video, it's gonna be right there.
Yeah. I think so.
Like myself, so I would think we can have them. At the movie center. I mean, that's obviously your decision, I think, but, um. I know we went to print today on his letter, and if we're going to start.
Yeah.
When?
They they're hoping to start in two, within two weeks, all weather dependent, of course. And most of it is dependent on them finishing up a project in Wake and pulling those big pieces of equipment here. So, um. It could be three weeks. The next week or the in two weeks, we might be fine. It's all dependent. So. We'll know more. They'll know more in the next week when their official start date is. So.
Has anybody looked to see if the C E C is available?
I think about it today, but I will. Yeah.
I wasn't going to make the assumption because as soon as I do that, it will have every Monday for the next year tied up with some.
And we have figured it out how we can shut off the A C. So. It might get warm, but you can at least hear people. So there's that.
Please let us know.
I will.
Oh, they're not the C E C.
Yes.
Um. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Oh, oh.
Susan Scaries.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yeah.
And Teresa Harns.
Yeah. And Mike, my assumption was you wanted me to contact W H R and get this session started.